All right, 6:30. I call the May 24th study session Littleton City Council order. All of the council is present except for Councilwoman Melman, who said she will be late and graciously allowed us to start without her. Let's see, we got two study session topics tonight. First is economic development update, which is just an update. And the second will have a capital improvement strategy. There'll be some direction requested from staff.
All right, Mayor, who I'm going to immediately turn it over to you carefully.
Sure.
Okay.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. We have an economic development update tonight. As you know, we've had the great opportunity to kind of reboot our economic development efforts and a chance to recruit new leadership. So it's been incredible, I guess, sort of mini journey so far, getting to work alongside of Cindy, set a pace. I mean, just the expertise and talent that we've been able to recruit, both in putting Cindy in place in the director position. And then Brian and Jamie, they feel have the opportunity to meet tonight. It's a powerful team and a really wonderful opportunity to reemerge with economic development efforts. And I think begin to deliver some of the things that both council and the community identified through our comprehensive plan, our transportation master plan, our other master planning efforts. And so with that, we have a presentation tonight, just to kind of give you a sense. But I think you want to go ahead and introduce yourself and then your key.
Sure. Yeah, I'm happy to do that. So I think I know everybody, but Cindy Perry, Economic Development Director. And happy to introduce some person, our team. I have Brian Garner, and he's our Senior Economic Development Specialist. And this is Jamie Crow, and she's our Economic Development Specialist. So they'll talk a little bit about what their focus is going to be throughout the rest of this year, a little bit later in the presentation. Be available to answer questions later. So, thank you Kathleen. Economic development has been discussed as a key component of council goal number two, financial sustainability. And I see Tiffany is here tonight as well. And it was also discussed at the council retreat this past February. So at the retreat, council directed staff to schedule an update. So that is why we are here tonight and we're happy to be here. So tonight, we're going to give you a look into what we've been doing for the past six months. And then a look ahead throughout the rest of this year, and then a sneak peek into 2023. So I came on board in November and right as the city was really emerging out of COVID and the economic development initiatives and efforts prior to my coming on board were focused on COVID response and recovery. And then there were some staffing changes. So when I came in, it was a fantastic opportunity to reboot. So we're really, really excited to bring some, some new energy to economic development and also expand on some of the really good work that was done in the past here. So what the heck have I been doing since November? So I came in and it was a team of me. So my, my first priority was to, to build a team. And my approach to, to recruitment was really to bring in some fresh perspectives and, you know, hopefully some new ideas for economic development. And here's where I'll talk a little bit more about them. Brian comes to us with a combination of economic development and planning experience. Very, very business friendly focused, but he understands the complexities of the planning process and the development review process. So he's a fantastic addition to our team. And Jamie Crow is a relatively recent college graduate. She brings a youthful perspective. And I, and she's going to be engaging with the youth of our community. And she'll talk a little bit more about some of her focus areas, but very bright and tons of energy. So I think we've built a really, really great team. So from day one, you know, our objective when we all got here was to start meeting people. We're all relatively new to Littleton. So we've been hitting the street and, you know, knocking on doors, shaking hands and meeting people and trying to build those relationships because that's really important for, for economic development. We've been assessing our toolbox and, and our needs and, you know, what programs have, have we had in the past? What's worked, what hasn't worked, trying to get an understanding of this community and what the real needs are. There's, we can come into economic development with kind of that, you know, cookie cutter approach. But, you know, we're really trying to come at it strategically with programs and services that are meaningful for the community. And then we have been working to position Littleton as a city of choice. And we're doing that through storytelling and that is, you know, telling the story of the ULUC, telling the story of our businesses and, and telling the story of all the strategic advantages that we have here. So early on, we've, the mayor did, was participated in a mayor's forum with the South Metro Mayors. We've got, we had some press in Business View Magazine. And we also promoted Economic Development Week, which you probably have seen some of that activity. So I don't believe that Littleton had participated in Economic Development Week prior to this year. So this was our, our inaugural effort to be a participant in this. And this is a International Economic Development Council program. So it's internationally recognized. It's an awareness campaign of economic development and, and an opportunity for cities to talk about things that they're doing. So we dedicated each day to an element of economic development. So we had Infrastructure Day. We shared some of the investment that Public Works is doing. We had Small Business Day. We pushed out some resources for Small Business Day. We did a video campaign with small and large businesses in the city. We, we kicked it off with My Why. And we really wanted to hear from businesses, you know, why they're choosing Littleton. And, you know, what's important to them. So you'll see a little montage of those videos in just a bit. We're going to parlay that into a, a larger campaign, which I'll talk about in a little bit. We had Key Industries Day and we have key sectors here that intuitively we, we feel are target industries or, you know, industries that are, are strong in the region and in Littleton. We'll be exploring that with some of our studies that are coming up. But we want to talk about some of the strong industries, healthcare, aerospace, technology, and retail. Our big day was Workforce Day. We had multiple partners that worked with us on a, an expert panel for Workforce Day. And we had a job fair that followed that. So we had Lockheed Martin, we had Centura Health, and we had the regional beverage distribution participate in that panel. So we have two panels, an expert business panel, and then we had resources. And then we had Arapahoe Community College, Littleton Public Schools was there to talk about their epic campus. And then we had AD Works. And they talked about, you know, first we talked about, oh my gosh, it's so hard to hire someone. You know, retaining employees is difficult. The businesses talked about some of the things that they're doing in their companies that other businesses could learn from. And then we had our expert resource panel come up. And, you know, they talked about financial resources, trainings that they have. They can help with recruitment. So it was really an interactive panel. And then we followed that with a job fair. And we had 10 companies that participated in the job fair and we had about 20 job seekers, which in this day and age is pretty darn good. You know, I've been to job fairs and there's three people wandering through. So we had some really good interactions at that event. Then our last day was Tourism Day and we promoted some of the, the fun activities that are happening in Littleton. Some of the, the great resources for arts and culture. So that all went out through social, social media. And then I did get a report, we had a, a strong social media push on this. So I have to thank our communications team. I mean, they, they just killed it with Workforce Day. They helped us to record that event. So now we have an imposterity and we can use that for training throughout the rest of the year. They did a fantastic job in social media and apparently our highest engagement was the job fair and the workforce panel. The epic campus received a lot of attention as well as staff profiles. Who knew? And then Facebook was our, our largest driver of engagement. But what we did see is an increase in interest towards the end of the week on LinkedIn. And that's really our audience. You know, the business community is one of the, the areas that we want to start to try to reach. And we did see some improvements there. So I'm told that, oh, there it is. It worked. So this is the My Why video campaign that, that we had just asked businesses to send in, you know, a short little video. What's important? We're going to transition this into a Made in Littleton campaign. So we'll be out talking to businesses and featuring them. And, you know, if they're doing, making some cool or innovative product, we want to, we want to interview them and share that with the rest of the community and beyond. So this is just kind of a really quick introduction and snapshot. It's a montage of several of the videos that we received.
Hi, I'm a photo and video student at Arapahoe Community College.
Hi, we're Frederick X. Boy.
Hi, my name is Mary Amor and I'm a photo and video student at Arapahoe.
What's happening? Use your imagination.
I'm the president of Historic Littleton Inc.
Hi, I'm Heather.
I love Littleton because it is a beautiful community full of friendly people and lots of opportunities.
We work with US manufacturers to sell their products into 85 countries around the globe. We love Littleton because of the tight knit community.
Funny that I hadn't attended. I can share the video after the meeting. I know it's, it's linked in the materials. Okay. All right. Moving my log. So, so what's next? So we've been through our first six months. So we, we've had some time to reflect. And, you know, we have a lot of ideas. We have a lot of energy. But in order for us to be effective, we really wanted to take some time and focus on areas that we felt were immediate needs and that we can make some impact. So our focus for the next six months is going to be on, on small business support, workforce development, business retention and expansion, and then obviously the website. So they'll talk a little bit about what their roles are in each of these areas. And, you know, some of the, the programs and services that we're looking to implement by the end of this year and then looking forward. So this slide really just breaks it down, you know, and again, in order for us to have some focus. So we're not trying to be all things to all people. You know, I'm going to be overseeing strategy, day-to-day operations, outreach and attraction, and then helping to shepherd through catalytic projects. So I will let Brian just kind of go over his focus area and Jamie. And we'll also be assigned sector areas where we can, you know, become more of the subject matter expert. So those key industries that I spoke of earlier, instead of us trying to attend all events, you know, we're each going to take a, a signed area. So I, we just, we just divvied these up. So I have to look at my notes. So I'll be responsible for advanced manufacturing, healthcare, life sciences. So, you know, our intention is that, you know, we'll be out engaging with those communities, getting involved with those trade associations, those community partners that are already here and helping them to either grow, expand, or, or working to attract complementary businesses to those sectors. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to Brian so he can talk a little bit about his areas.
Yeah, thanks. So to say that we have a lot of ideas is a bit of an understatement. Trying to ground ourselves and try to, you know, get the table set. So we're all, we're all dining together here. But so I'm going to be primarily tackling two key sectors and that's aerospace and technology. And we're kind of peppered with some of those industries in, in Littleton and surrounding areas, as you know. So in three, kind of three different ways, I'll be tackling those sectors. One of them is BRE, which is Business Retention and Expansion. So with that, I'm really looking for kind of more meaningful and creative ways to engage the business community with the city and with other businesses and try to network and connect each other a little bit better. One way we're looking at doing that is through some BRE software. So there's actually BRE specific software that's out there that kind of takes a lot of the work and it kind of draws on multiple sources of data to, to help kind of rein it in and, and connect everybody. So that's one thing we're looking at right now. We're always looking at prospecting and attracting new businesses that benefit Littleton. We're doing a business survey this summer that we're kicking off. Of course, site visits and relationship building is always at the top of our list. And working with finance to update the business licensing program is, is one of our goals as well. And then with the community development process improvements, so we need, really need to kind of sit down and process, kind of map out the process and procedures of everything with the, the new land use code. So we'll be doing that. We really want to ensure predictability and practicality with the code. Ensure effective process that is responsive and timely for everybody that's using it, interacting with it. And of course, ensure consistency and fairness. Excuse me. And then with catalytic project support, primarily with my planning background, I'll be looking to kind of bridge the gap between, if there's a gap between planning and economic development. So again, just kind of offering that support to the development community any way I can.
Jamie, you want to talk a little bit about your primary roles?
Yeah. So my two primary industries will be retail slash restaurants and then finance. Retail goes very easily with the small businesses. So things that I've been working on so far is kind of seeing what resources we are able to provide to small businesses right now and kind of what we're lacking at this point or what needs to be updated. And so that's what I've been working on and we'll continue to move forward with that. Outreach to business owners, kind of what Brian mentioned. We started some site visits, got to go to Rocker Spirits yesterday. We'll have a healthcare facility site visit come up next week. So we're trying to get that scheduled so we can have that one-on-one time with these businesses and really get to know people. Cindy and I got to go to a conference in Colorado Springs a bit ago. And we got to hear about some innovative programs coming up. So we've been researching different ideas about things that we can bring into Littleton. Specifically, one that has stood out is a pop-up shop program. And we are still in very early phases of just researching. But we do have a capstone candidate that is very interested in helping us with this. Doing some research, figuring out application process, regulations, budgeting, branding. And that student goes to CU Denver. So she is very energetic and very excited and it's been fun to talk to her. We will continue to keep working, looking towards other programs, but still an early process of that. Then the next thing is workforce, which kind of goes hand in hand with the Next Bullet Youth and nonprofit engagement. One cool thing that we have been talking with LPS and Littleton Business Chamber is about a entrepreneurship mentor program. And so this is, we'll have our first meeting about that next week and feeling very excited. People are very, very passionate about this topic, I think, all around. So we're really just going to brainstorm and throw ideas out for our first meeting and then kind of go from there. Let's see. We, like Cindy said earlier, we've been partnering, partnering with ACC, LPS, AD Works. And they have been really good resources for us this far, so far. In the future, I'll get to be touring some maker spaces and get some ideas of just different stuff that we can offer here. And as always, we're trying to use the data that we're getting and make data-driven decisions as we move forward in our workforce development program. Both of these areas will be used in social media pretty heavily and starting a strategy with that.
Thank you. Okay. So Jamie mentioned data. Data is, is critical for what we do. So some of the work that we're going to be doing is, is engaging with a consultant to mine data. And this is all in preparation for our strategy next year. So we have retained EPS and they are looking at retail and mixed-use analysis. That work will include identifying opportunity areas, you know, recommendations on an appropriate and viable mix of uses in Littleton. Their work will also provide economic indicators. So we'll have data-driven economic indicators that we can take out into these industries and, and market Littleton. So, you know, we're aligning the, what our strengths are with their needs. We're also looking at better use of technology for this, this data mining. So every day we're asked, you know, hey, how, what's, what's the, what's the demographics around Littleton Village? You know, can you give us a radius and, or what is, what is the income in this part of the city? So when we started, poor Jamie, I said, can, you know, I gave her a list of data points and she spent hours and days, you know, on BLS and all these different data sites, census, all, tons of them. We had a demo of a tool that I have used in the past. It's Esri-based, so very data-driven. And we asked a question and I kid you not, probably three seconds. And here is all of the data that she spent days on in a beautiful presentation, infographic format that was easily modified for whatever purpose and all of the data sources cited and verified. So those are the types of tools that we're going to be looking at and potentially coming back with recommendations. Other foundational work is, you know, we have a brand new code. It's in its infancy. So we're going to be tracking the impact of the new ULUC. And I, I think you can see based on the activity on the DALL that, you know, it has opened up doors. So we're going to work with community development to come up with some, you know, verifiable metrics to kind of track the impact of the ULUC over time, as well as some of the investment that Public Works is going to be making. On the other side, we have storytelling. It's, it's really important as we go out and talk with, you know, small business, you know, somebody that's on Etsy that wants to come and open one of the little pop-up retail shops. You know, they, they need to be aware of, of Littleton's story. So we've just kind of been brainstorming once again, some ideas for campaigns. And we will work with communications going forward. But these are just some ideas. Made in Littleton would be, you know, business features where we go out on the street and talk to these businesses, businesses and we get into their shops and we go in the back and, you know, we see what they're doing. Innovate Littleton would be more on the entrepreneurial and innovation side. You know, we, we'd love to do like a sit-down format where we talk about some of that innovation and, you know, how did they get started? You know, maybe it will inspire that next, that next entrepreneur to, to come and talk to us. So we can get something going here in Littleton. I don't even remember what Littleton Live was. It was a great idea, but no, it was, it was a man on the street where we kind of just go out or a woman on the street where we go out and, and talk to businesses. And so we really want to start engaging and kind of raising the interest on social media, our channel, Channel Eight, and, and doing strategic story placements. And Kathleen, I think the first week, she's like, we have so many women-owned businesses here. And as we started talking to people, yeah, we do. We have a lot of women-owned businesses. So we are working with communications and we're going to do, try to get like a feature article out there telling that story. So those are the kinds of things that we want to do on, on the storytelling. And again, I mean, we can't do this without the communications team. They've been phenomenal and so supportive. So all of this work that we're doing this year is leading up to our strategy, our comprehensive economic development strategy of 2023. We plan to have an RFP out on the street probably later this year. And then we would plan to, you know, get that process going in, in early 2023. Our intention is that, you know, our, our strategy is actionable, data-driven, you know, backed by the work that EPS is doing in this year. We want to set very specific, short, medium and long-term goals. And we really want this to be an inclusive process. We have a lot of partners that are impacted by what we do here. So we would incorporate our partners in the scope process and the evaluation implementation process. So I, I think that you, you mentioned the survey. So I think we're good. So I think that concludes our presentation. We really appreciate the support and are open to questions.
Questions, Council?
I'll fire away. Very excited to meet you too and Cindy, have you onboard. I think we've all been neediness. The city certainly has been, the small businesses, Littleton Business Chamber has been requesting this type of interaction. So I really appreciate you guys getting after it. We used to do anniversary cards and people seem to like those. Was that anything you'd seen yet? Or is that something we're still doing, Kathleen? Do you know?
We haven't been keeping up with that, no.
Okay.
So it's good feedback for us.
Yeah. I don't know if that's something that we still want to maybe potentially do or not. I don't know if you guys hear my feedback on the anniversary cards. It's just postcards, you know, hey, you're third, you're third year anniversary. And then Airbnb, is that something you think worth going after? And then Airbnb, is that something you think worth going after those owners? And, and I mean, they are a business and there's what, 40 of them or so around town owners. Something to throw out there.
Yeah, I, I, I haven't heard much on the Airbnb front since I have been here. Or is your, is your question more on promoting Airbnb, like is it tourism?
Well, I think both, yes, that, but also just making sure they, we appreciate their, you know, I mean, they are paying taxes. I think it's, I think it's good that they know, we know that they exist. I think it's good that, you know, remind them to get licensed, to keep up with their license. And, you know, I just think it's an important community to be involved with. It is, like I said, 40 potential individual-owned businesses. That can be a subcategory, right? And maybe it's not real high priority, but something maybe down the road as you guys get here.
And to provide them with resources for their guests to hear what you've been doing. Here's the, you know, welcome.
Yeah, I'm one of those things you see in the hotel with like all the things that go on Colorado, all the pamphlets, right?
Yeah, I mean, that's actually, that's a great idea to have itineraries or, you know, packages. And I, I understand that communications has kind of stirred some of, some of that work. So I think that's a great connection.
Yeah, I think there's an opportunity to build both on the, the work on the tourism front as well as our new licensing program for short-term rentals. So I think as, as community development, I know that we're coming back with an update on short-term rentals, I think in the fall, is what we had talked about when both Jennifer Henninger and John Schumacher were here with Council about a month ago, six weeks ago, where does time go? But with that update, I think maybe we can, we can do some work on that front and, and give you kind of an understanding of, of how that fits into this strategy as well.
Jerry?
Yeah, thanks. Really excited about this program getting started up again and welcome everybody. And, and I mean, really excited to hear about the new program. I think you were sort of alluding to it, that'll help, I guess, all of you, provide information for our existing and potentially new businesses for Littleton too. So really exciting. When do you think that might be up and running?
Yeah, so we're going to have more formalized program recommendations by the end of this year. That will inform, you know, how we build out the website. So we should have all of that fully vetted prior to that time.
Excellent, yeah. I'm really looking forward to that. Channel Eight is a great resource. If we, if we could steer people to see that, that is such a great channel for, about Littleton. So many good things on there. Neighborhood organizations too is one that we've done in the past. Because that's where a lot of the, the business owners live is in our neighborhoods and organizations get to know those small businesses out there that are really unaware that you exist. So that, that was a good resource in the past. And last but not least, the, the, the businesses aren't just on Main Street, the surrounding area. I've, I've heard from other businesses, it's like they don't exist to the city. So we, we really got to have more than just downtown. Love downtown, of course, that's a heart. But, you know, going up Littleton Boulevard, down Broadway and elsewhere, there's more than just Aspen Grove and, and Main Street.
Yeah, no, I, I, I love that. And, you know, one of the ideas that we've had is to do a bi-monthly, you know, engagement session and kind of take the show on the road and, and meet with different groups, neighborhood organizations in different parts of the city, just to kind of get a pulse on, you know, what their issues are. And that gives us an opportunity to provide resources back to them.
Yeah, and as you head up the Littleton Boulevard, say from the, the tracks, you know, the uptown Littleton or something like that. There's so many businesses there that don't get any attention and so many of those buildings are historically significant. It'd be neat to kind of just build that whole Littleton Boulevard up. And I'm still pushing for that arch, you know, on Littleton Boulevard.
One arch, not double arch. One arch, not a double arch.
No, just one arch, one, one big arch. You know, that, you know, that really attracts people as they go down Broadway both directions and they see that arch that really makes them eventually go explore. That'd be a great thing.
I mean, it's an excellent point. I, I know I introduced the team to Anne at Festasports. And I mean, it's, it's like an incredible story. And just what a gift to have that kind of business owner here.
Yeah, you could probably expect a video about her.
Right, exactly. I don't know if you want to share a little bit about just her story. She, yeah, is fashion designer from New York.
Oh, yeah, she, she's a transplant from New York. I think 20 years in New York City, high fashion runway experience, moves to Colorado. And I, I think you engaged with her at a golf event. So, so she had cancer at a very young age. And as a result of the treatment, she gained a lot of weight, but she still was really fashion, you know, fashion conscious. So she couldn't find clothes and she's a clothesmaker. So what's the natural thing to do? She started making her own clothes and other people wanted to buy them. So she, she ended up transitioning into golf wear because, you know.
Golf and tennis.
Golf and tennis, yeah. The skirts might be a little short for some, so she, she would take special orders. But she was really attentive to, you know, other people's needs. And, and she just opened a shop on Littleton Boulevard. Jamie, I think you've been there.
Yes.
So Jamie went and talked with her and, you know, we're trying to get her connected and, and help her get that word out. So those are just some of the, the really interesting stories. And she's got an amazing story. To hear her tell it is a lot more interesting than when I tell it. But she's fascinating and those are, those are the types of businesses that, you know, we're trying to engage with and help them get to the next level. And if, and if they want to scale, then they can scale. Or if they want to stay small, they stay small. So, yeah, fantastic story.
I think the part that I was most impacted by from that visit was that she's really good at what she does. But the running a business part, like there's some support that she could use. And, and I think that that's, you know, when you attract really vibrant and creative and innovative owners of businesses, what can we do just to make that other part really easy, right? Because you can get completely overwhelmed by the running the business part to the point that you're like, don't love your thing anymore. And like, don't love your creativity as much.
Well, Honda Design is a similar story. And, and so many people don't know what Honda Design is, but it's a similar story on Littleton Boulevard there. And that's kind of businesses we need to help let people know. She draws from all over the place, long, you know, the demographics goes way out there.
That's, storytelling is so important to get that out there. And it kind of goes back to what you just said about the other areas in Littleton. It came, came up in the Breakfast with the Business Chamber. I wonder if having some kind of almost branding for Littleton Boulevard, Broadway, the other business centers in Littleton that would help tell that story. Because, you know, what do you, what do you call the other side of, by Flat Canyon? What do you, I mean, what's that area called? You know, there's no brand.
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Very interesting. Well, I would totally help with that. I mean, I bet other council members would too, like to help elevate that. It's just talking to some of those businesses and, you know, helping them get linked up with the city. Stories matter and I just love that you're doing the storytelling.
Yeah.
It's so powerful and it's so individualized. And that messaging, I think, is what connects, connects us and makes our community strong. I also appreciate the data side of things because, yeah, that is really missing. And it's not just this, it's across the board where we're missing data. So it's great that you're collecting that. And I know it's labor-intensive. And Brian, I appreciate you talking about that software. I imagine that's exciting, but also, also like labor-intensive.
Mostly exciting.
Just to be able to track. And as we, you know, think more about formalizing more of the business chamber and executive directors and stuff, like I can see how those work. One of my questions is, can you walk me through like workflow for a new business that comes, a new person who wants to, you know, set up a yoga studio or something like that? Like what do they encounter when they first interface with the city? And like, what's that wraparound support like?
Yeah, so that is one thing that Jamie's working on, like developing that full-blown workflow. But our, our interim process is, you know, we just, we'll get intake through typically just our, our email from the website or referral. So we, we meet with them, we talk about what their business is, where they are. And, and then we typically provide a menu of, of resources and then we follow up with them. So one business, you know, might be looking for a location. So we'll, we'll help, we'll do site searches for them or connect them with a broker that aligns with whatever their core business is. Some of them are like, I have bad credit, how do I get financing? So we'll connect them with SBDC, which is Small Business Development Council, and other, other resources, which, you know, you might see some more of these types of recommendations come forward as, in the form of like, I don't know, revolving loan funds or some, something. But we're going to vet, vet that a bit more. So it's very customized to whatever their particular, if they're having recruitment challenges, we'll connect them with AD Works. And AD Works will do, will serve as a job board for them at no cost to them. So, so there's a variety of, of resources that we have at our disposal. And as we develop the website, you know, we intend to take all of these resources, and also make it available there so they can just kind of go like, okay, I have recruiting issues. You know, we'll just try to categorize those and make it easy for them to, to find that.
To add on to what Jerry was saying and talking about the branding, I think that our business owners in certain areas of the city beyond downtown would appreciate much more of a little bit more of a micro approach or branding approach. I think, one off the top of my head, Littleton Village was dying for more commercial. But if something is, can be unique to them, with respect to Littleton Boulevard, thinking about historical preservation board and how they're trying to build awareness and they have tours in their hip pocket. So I don't know how that might be a partnership where they're trying to get people to be aware of the historical value of their buildings and then you're trying to provide help if they need it. It, it, it might be a partnership worth exploring.
Yeah.
Every, every business on Littleton Boulevard should have the information for historical ink there to do those tours and things.
Right, and, and for example, there was a real success story with staff where somebody was going to redo their building and they were totally not aware of the historic nature of it. And they actually just did something a little different to keep within the character of the community once they were aware. Plus I think the city had some money for them too, which helped. But just kind of that awareness. So anyhow, I love your strategic approach. I think it's great. It's well-thought-out and it just covers everything, but just not so much that you're not having time to do your tactics to get to your goals. One question I had was about the permit process. Don't we not charge very much for our business permits or not request renewals? I mean, is that something that you're kind of evaluating?
Yeah, the business license program. So Tiffany is, Tiffany's here. So I'm, I'm hoping.
You want Tiffany to answer it?
So in, businesses are required to get a license, but it's kind of a one-time thing. So if I open a business, I get my license and, you know, I leave and, you know, we're still sending information. We don't know, there's not a renewal process. I don't believe there's a charge for it. But it's really valuable data and it's an opportunity for us and the city to reengage with businesses. So, you know, we, we've got that renewal process, it's reengagement. We can, we can better track the types of business. So we can, you know, have different categories. And we're sending out information with our Salesforce platform, you know, the state just released, you know, on the job, there's on-the-job training available and it's focused in these sectors. So we can just go through our database if we know what, what the types of businesses are. So that's where that's super helpful.
So is that something you're looking at updating and recommending something?
I think Tiffany's going to speak to it.
I think there, I mean, I remember on council, we talked about that and said, and so I'm sure we kind of threw a little.
Yeah, and, and it's just kind of, I, I know we've looked at it as a fee, but I just thought maybe since you said business processes, I thought maybe you were going to really kind of delve into it a little bit more.
Surprise.
I just wanted to add, I think it was during the leadership or the council retreat that we talked about potential revenue changes in the future. And one of the feed, some of the feedback we got is that you were interested in looking at doing some sort of fee in addition to renewals potentially. I will say that, you know, with the 3A valid question and notifying businesses about the sales tax change was a challenge because our databases just don't have current information because we don't require a renewal process. And so that to me was a perfect opportunity to come back and share with you, hey, we really need this and these are reasons why. So yes, we've talked about that and you will likely see something during the 2023 budget to bring forward a potential, at least a renewal process, not necessarily a fee. That's your decision, but at least some sort of renewal process. The other part is we also have a system currently, Track at Nine, that will allow us to do that online with or without a fee. We currently use it for our sales tax licenses now. We just have to add the option for renewal. So absolutely something that Denise, that we've been talking about and just.
It just makes a lot of sense, even if there's, whether we decide on a, a renewal fee, but for data and to be able to push out and slice and dice the database would just be invaluable in, in terms of, you know, evaluating what you're doing and what you need to do and where you're going and how everything's working and communication, you know. Yeah, okay, thank you.
I think Mark wanted to chime in.
Just to reinforce that, yes, Tiffany's point here. I know the city attorney's office has been talking to Tiffany here about a, you know, code change is probably be necessary. So as we kind of work through the 2023 budget process, if the council does have interest in a renewal, you'll likely see something from the city attorney's office.
Steve?
Yeah. So good timing on the presentation following up after that business chamber discussion. And I was really impressed by how well-thought-out policies process is going to be. But it's also kind of new territory for a lot of these businesses as well as our city. Do you have some sort of game plan in terms of how you'd be working with the new executive director? How they integrate to your, into your guys' department? How they can help gather data for you in terms of, you know, business use, all those kinds of things? I know it's really early, so I'm not expecting like concrete answers. It's more just having thought about that.
Yeah, absolutely, you know. And obviously, we're going to go through the process with the chamber and they'll come back with a scope and all of that. But, but typically how I've worked with chambers before is, you know, you know, we're adjunct staff to each other, you know. They, they have the ability to be the pulse on what's happening in the business community and that informs some of, some of our programs. They may tell us, I don't know, I'm going to make, I'm going to mix things up, you know. You know, we're having, we're having a hard time finding staff. I mean, that's, that's kind of the complaint of the day. So that, that then tells us, you know, we need to work on specific workforce programs. So we would do that in partnership with the chamber and with our other partners. I've also worked with chambers where they develop a subcommittee, an economic development committee. Their committee, they talk about, you know, kind of their, their push points and what's challenging them. They may ask us to come in and talk about different issues that are impacting them from a business perspective. Is it transportation? Is it a new healthcare law that, that's coming down? That's going to rise their, increase their business costs? So we would, we would work with them to find the appropriate people and speakers and come up with solutions. So those are just some ideas and then they, you know, I, I envisioned that they would kind of be the, the training branch and, you know, coordinate a rotating, similar to what, you know, we might do, but in a different format, like have, have chamber meetings in different quadrants of the city, bring in speakers and then, you know, they could have that, have a networking event following that because it's very important to the members of, of the chambers, you know, that cross-section, you know, who, who's in my supply chain, who's, who can I partner with? So long answer, but just some of the thoughts that, that are early thoughts that I've had.
That's helpful. And just as a kind of a follow-up to the city manager's office on this too, with regards to appropriating those ARPA funds for that three-year period, is that going to, is there going to be an MOU process that follows that says, for example, in return for some of this, we would like to help, you know, have you all do data gathering on an annual basis? And we will provide you with, you know, licensing support. Is that, is that something we're going to see in the future following that agreement?
You will, yes, the count, short answer is yes. So the council, you know, asked a few modifications here to, you know, the proposal that they made. So staff will follow up with them. So there will be a formal MOU?
MOU is what we're looking at and then developing an actual scope work.
Okay.
So those two pieces.
So those two pieces together.
And then reporting back to council annually here just on their progress and all that.
Yeah, and I thought the scope that they proposed at the breakfast sounded great. I was just wondering if there was gonna be a more formal agreement process, obviously for that.
I think we, yeah, like we like the list that they generated, but I think it's like translating that into actual deliverables. And then probably tailoring those to some sort of metrics as best we can, at least in, in early days. So I think that's where the proposal just doesn't have as much as we would like to see. And so we have clear expectations of where we'll see that progress.
I actually have two questions. Thank you so much. I mean, like Patrick said, we've just been like anxiously awaiting your arrival. We're happy you're here and doing all the great work that you're doing. Two questions. So the first question is, are there any barriers, barriers that you've encountered with minority owned businesses? I know you said there's a lot of female owned businesses in Littleton, which I'm ecstatic about. I mean, I know a couple of them. Happy to hear there's more than I thought there was, but are there any barriers? Or is that something that you're looking at?
Yeah, yes, we are absolutely looking at that. And that will be part of our, our data dive, you know? Just again intuitively, you know, I haven't observed as many minority and, well, except for the W, the maybe weebees, but the minority owned businesses. But we have come across a few and, and we've provided, once again, you know, unique resources for those groups. So that would be, you know, a segment within our programming. And, you know, I, I think diversity is something that we will absolutely be looking at, you know, long term as part of, part of the long term strategy.
Now, we, my husband and I took my mother in law to a fantastic restaurant in downtown Denver called Magnolia. And they're a Louisiana owned restaurant, yes, they are. And they were opening a second restaurant.
Speak of their cage, it doesn't mean they're minority.
So anyway, I asked, I was like, don't you want to open one in Littleton? They go, yeah, we thought about it, but we're actually going to someplace else. I was like, no, seriously? So, yeah, thank you for that.
Yeah, and that's part of our outreach and, you know, the storytelling, just kind of spreading, spreading the word about all the cool things that we have here and opportunities.
I think that's hugely important, definitely. The second thing is, I'm so excited, Brian, that you're tagging the aerospace industry. I know when I first got on council, Karina Alrod and I were both trying to think in our heads, like, how can we try to get that industry into Littleton based on the ties, you know, to the history of this community and why it exploded in growth back in the fifties, the ties to Lockheed Martin or to Marriott and then COVID hit.
They were in Littleton, they were at that old gate plant.
Key word is were.
I just found out.
That building might be available.
I sent this to Mark and to Kyle. There's a small Blue Origins office that's opening right at Lucen and C four seventy in Highlands Ranch.
We're watching it closely and every time there's a headline, I'm probably sending it to Cindy and I'm like, oh my God, we gotta do something about this. So we're, we're tracking it, you know, as best we can, just in our ramp up here. But yeah, we'll be definitely making a more concentrated effort to target that.
I mean, it's, you know, it's a red hot industry, high paying salaries.
And growing.
And growing, not stopping. You got ACC they can partner with and, yeah, and then Lockheed's right down the road.
Yeah, yeah, and as part of our, our data research, you know, we, we know this is a target industry, but what are those site selectors looking for? So, you know, we'll, we'll pick the top three or four data points that they're looking for. Brian's building those relationships. We also want to get out and talk to those businesses within the city and find out, are they having supply chain issues? Do they need a widget maker or is, you know, so, so that we can complete that, that ecosystem for those target industries.
Whatever we can do to help.
I get a question. How tied into other resources for you are you? Like I'm thinking OED at the Office of Economic Development and what is it, international trade? Things like that, that you can provide to other businesses? You know, I know at the Department of Agriculture I work, there's an international export team and all they do is just try to find businesses to work on exporting their products, whether it's potatoes or, you know, millet or vodka. We do a lot of alcohol exports. But how, how tied into those resources are you that you can, you know, parlay that into even bigger gains?
Yeah, that's, that's a great question. And ODA is on, on his radar list and we've already talked about, you know, really getting engaged with them. At, at the conference that we went to, I, I engaged with the Department of Agriculture more so on the brownfields, resources and discovered that they'll come out and do, you know, phase one if the city asks for it. You know, so these are the types of, of resources that we can garner. But yes, they, they are a fantastic resource. We're, we're engaged with a lot of the nonprofits that will provide wraparound support services more so on the smaller business side. But yeah, that's part of our, our inventory. If you come into my office and look at my whiteboard, you know, inventory, resources. And if, you know, we are open if you hear of something that, you know, a, a branch of that big system that's been helpful or, or you have a conversation, we would love to hear that and, and get that introduction.
Any other questions, council?
I'll just second what Kelly was saying about diversity. Well, because we were saying about being inclusive and trying to really be targeted. I know Colorado has, you know, an Asian Business Chamber of Commerce for the state of Colorado. There's a, you know, a black entrepreneurs, you know, group. And I would love for you guys to be liaising with those folks so we can attract those kind of businesses in Littleton and kind of grow that diversity footprint.
We kept three people who are very mindful of that, three things, so yeah, absolutely. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, nice meeting.
You can, you yield your five minutes to Keith then.
All right, so next up on the agenda here is capital improvement strategy. Update and some direction requested. Let Keith and Tiffany will present that some. Do you want to introduce them or just let them go?
I think we're gonna let them go. They have a lot to share with you. Keith, good job on getting the tree stuff organized so quickly.
We're gonna social distance up here. I'm more than happy while we're getting set up here to answer any questions you might have about tree branches. Obviously, somebody tall sat here first. Just start with that. I reached by every chair in the world, I adjust like that, so that's fine. But I'm happy to answer any questions anybody might have about tree branches. Obviously, we opened a drop site. The first issue for us was resources. I'm already telling Tiffany how much extra money I need at this point. The other, the actual, the bigger issue for us in this whole thing was we don't own places to go dump in terms of having people do drop offs. You know, people immediately think of like where we do Christmas tree drops. Cornerstone Park is full of sports teams every night of the week. So that was, that's not a viable option for us. So that's where we ended up in the location that we're at right now. We can't stay there long because we need Mother Nature to stay on our side because that's in a flood way, not just a flood plain. And also trying to find a location that's not, if you can find a location that's further from residential, that makes our life a lot less painful over time is the easiest way to put that, so.
Are you gonna go around to public right of ways, you know, when it's not on people's property? You know, you see stuff hanging down in the streets.
We'll, we'll eventually get to that. I only have one arborist and all the arborists in Colorado are currently occupied. And all of my, all of our streets crew and all of our grounds crew is on this work now. So anything that we had planned this week and next week is set aside in order to accomplish this for the community. You know, I know I got requests early on about coming and picking it up. I've been through communities, I, I had a community where we actually ran the trash operators and it still took us three weeks to do that. So I'm not a big advocate for that. I also think, my experience also says that this builds community and it builds networks. You reach out to your neighbors, you help your neighbors and that pays dividends later if you have a significant disaster event, has been my experience. So under our current game plan, we're gonna close on Thursday at seven because I'm, I'm, I'm just not gonna ask my operational crews to work over Memorial Day weekend the whole time. Based on what I'm expecting, I expect a whole bunch of people to do work in their yards over the weekend. So we're gonna probably reopen on Tuesday for at least a little while. On Tuesday, we're gonna have a, we have our own large chipper, but we needed something bigger. So I have a large grinder that'll be on site starting Tuesday at a pretty significant amount of money per week. You don't just go pick it up at a regular rental shop.
Those are fun to watch though, by the way.
This one's, we didn't get a tub grinder, so we're not gonna, you know, dump cars in there, but like you might see on TV. But we're, we had, it looks like a milling machine that you use on the road. And it has to be, you have to use equipment to load it. You can't use people to load it, is how big it is.
And what do you do with all the bulk?
People come back and pick up the mulch.
For their yards.
Well, yes, we'll probably, we'll probably do a, I mean, we already have that available on occasion after Christmas, after the holidays when we do that chipping, that's generally available. So we're gonna have a chance for people to come and do a pickup. You know, it, it depends, to be honest with you, my experience, that's not even gonna put a dent in the pile, realistically speaking. I was telling Mark the other day that I visited Florida right after Hurricane Charlie in the early two thousands and they have nearby, where I was, they have a double A baseball stadium. And while I was there, they had a brush pile that was three times as large as the baseball stadium and they had already chipped a pile that was twice as big as the stadium. So, you know, we're not in that state of affairs, but it will be interesting and, but we should be able to provide some to the community. People come kick it off and that kind of thing. So, you know, we're making progress, we'll, we'll get it plugged away.
And South suburban takes care of their, the, the trees on their parks?
Yeah, they, in talking with them strategy wise, they may do, they're gonna, they're probably gonna do a couple of drop sites of their own, but they won't even do that until next week.
They'll come and take care of hanging limbs?
Yeah, they'll be tackling, I mean, like we have stuff here on this facility and all of our people are tied up, you know, with this. So we'll get to that after we get the community kind of at least settled down for a little bit. It's our strategy right now, so, you know.
Well, again, thank you for getting a plan out so quickly because I had many people calling me and wanting those out, so.
I wanted to make sure they called you first.
And they did. I think I called you or emailed you on Sunday.
We get the variable message board out there, we'll put your cell number on it.
By Monday though, you were on top of it.
So, yeah, if you're looking for something to do though, feel free to come and direct traffic.
And by the way today, it was, it was busy.
Yeah, we've had people, since we opened it, we've had people constantly and it's been a challenge for us because it's still wet. So, and that's a collection area, so we, we've already put millings down and we have a strategy about how we're gonna do pile movement. So we'll, we'll keep plugging away. So there'll be a big pile of sticks out there for a little while.
All right, capital improvement strategy, which Tiffany was enjoying listening to.
I know, I know. Well, Tiffany will be out there, she's enjoying when I sent her the email today about, yes, I rented a chipper. This is what it looks like it's gonna cost me, so just a heads up.
I always thought it was Fargo.
Us East Coast waste guys have way different uses for chippers too. Totally different, totally different channel. So we're here to chat with you tonight about capital and really three A and some strategy. And our, our goal in tonight is to visit with you and talk really at the philosophical level and litmus test some things with you before we go down any major roadways of, of really diving into things to make sure that we're on board with where you want us to be going. So that's the intent of tonight's discussion. So what we're gonna talk about is, there's really three things that, four things we need to talk about. The first one is, what do we think the projected revenues are gonna be? Then potential strategies for use of the funds, how we would recommend thoughts and your feedback on a, on a citizen review committee as part of the program. And then from a purely technical perspective, how are we gonna establish the fund within the accounting system? And then potential sub funds out of that. So, so that's very clear for, for the citizens and the taxpayers, where that money's going, how it's being allocated and how it's being used here in the community. She gets to talk about the fun part, the revenues.
So three revenues, we kind of touched on this when I did an update earlier in the year and revised some of our projections. But, you know, the point seven five percent sales tax, it was effective on January one. I mentioned we're seeing delayed compliance, which is expected in first year. It's getting better as the months go along. Through April, our collections were about two point two million dollars and this truly represents January through March because we're about a one month lag on collecting sales tax revenues.
Is that just the point seven five of the whole?
That is just the point seven five, yes. And so I did revise the 2022 estimates, which are a little less than the nine point eight that we had been talking about previously when we went to the citizens for the ask. First year delayed compliance, that's significantly why I reduced it to about eight point seven. We'll keep revising this as we go through. So just kind of a graph, this also includes interest. Now, keep in mind, interest is gonna continue year over year until we get projects assigned. And so these could be inflated in the out years because we know we're gonna spend some of that money as we go through. This is purely just revenues with interest on top of that. But definitely just wanted to show you that it is higher than we originally anticipated just based on the collections we're seeing.
Tiffany, why, why is there a drop in from 2029 to 2030?
Well, that's because I let Keith do the graph.
It's my fault. Literally nine hundred thousand dollar typo. Easiest way to put it, that is. But I told her, I told her I'm more than happy to take spend that if it necessary is. That is literally a typo by Keith of nine hundred thousand dollars. It's one number, is what it was.
Yes. So twenty.
I don't know that's happening in 2029.
Right, yeah, I can foresee, no, I'm just kidding. You know, 2029 is actually fourteen million oh sixty three, not nine sixty three, so.
They're right next to each other on the keyboard.
So I apologize for that.
You're forgiving this one time, Keith.
Thanks.
I was thinking about tree branches.
Yeah, we will make sure that we correct that next time. But yes, just wanted to show you that it is increasing, it's higher than we had originally anticipated. Still want to be cautious because of recession, inflation, all of those factors, but definitely higher than we anticipated. Keith gets to talk about the strategy.
Love spending it.
Yeah.
He's good at that.
That's correct. Typos are in my favor right now. So, so really, one of the things that we, we want to really kind of start the discussion on with you is, so there's, there's a lot of different ways that you can, I'll talk more in detail about allocations in a second, but from a bigger picture strategy, there, there's, there's a few different ways that you can, that you can deploy the funds. You can just do year over year based on your projected revenue. And the spreadsheet that's in here, I'll show you a couple of examples of that here in a couple of minutes as we talk through that. And then the other, there's a number of different options that are related to accelerating work by, by issuing some type of debt service. And there's a number of different instruments for that and that's from Tiffany's expertise. And so an example of how that, that could do is, is so let's take for example downtown streetscape. So if you say to yourself, you want to spend, let's call it ten million dollars on downtown streetscape, you can do that at one million dollars a year for 10 years. And then you're gonna also hear that you're like driving on the New York State thruway where you feel like you're driving in constant construction for 10 years. No matter how you, let's say you do a block by block or part by part, you're still in a construction zone on and off for 10. No matter how you, let's say you do a block by block or part by part, you're still in a construction zone on and off for ten years. Um, and then, so how do you, how do you tackle that, a question like that? Then there's the question of when you have a really large project. For example, we've talked about a replacement for building two and three down at the Public Works campus. Just for the folks at home, our, uh, seventy-five percent of our buildings down there were built between nineteen forty-eight and nineteen fifty-three, making them all seven decades old and they, they look like it. So, but I put a number in there that you'll see in a minute and I'll, I'll answer why and I actually think that number's pretty significantly low, to be honest with you, based on what we've seen over the last few years, not even including current construction. So the question comes is, you know, do you end up with a piggy bank fund to save up for like four or five years or however strategy, so you have the, the money available to do that? But also in that same time span, construction costs are rising. So is it worth the balancing effect of that? So that's really a bigger picture. And so I wanted to show you some examples in this spreadsheet about how we might tackle that. And since the numbers are so small, it's not worth it to put it up there, that's why it's in here. So, if you wanna flip over to this, this spreadsheet right here. Your packet. Okay. I have to put my glasses on to actually do this. So, what Tiffany and I did was, we went through the process of saying, okay, what are the major buckets of categories that we've talked about from a capital perspective? And looking at the unfunded capital list that's, that's been compiled over the last several years with staff and with council. And some of those things, we, so we, we broke those into major categories. And that's what's listed down the left side of the spreadsheet and those categories are fleet, information technology capital, um, facilities maintenance capital. This is one where, right now, we spend about three hundred thousand dollars a year and we know just purely based on square footage, that needs to be at least eight hundred or nine hundred thousand. Um, which, not doing that creates other issues down there. Um, streets capital maintenance, that's additional money to supplement street paving and street, street maintenance. Uh, local match for grants that we continue to chase and bring into this community to leverage outside dollars, which we know has been a big discussion point the last few years. Um, security capital, um, we continue to just, you know, we continue to see more security needs for all of our buildings. Um, whether it's a building like this where we have police and public or we have buildings like the library with different security needs. And so we need to plan for that, those continued capital investments. Facilities capital construction is ongoing things for like HVAC systems. For example, the museum is approaching its twenty-year horizon. So you have, you have backhouse systems that the public doesn't see but are necessary to keep collections. Or we've been through this building here as an example that we can't buy free on for anymore, the AC system, because they're past, you know, they were supposed to be taken out a long time ago, but they're not. So that kinda thing. Public safety capital, um, we know that there's going to be, um, ongoing needs for public safety capital. Whether it's continuing needs for technology, body cameras, other equipment, those kinda things. Um, one of the questions that did come in is there's one point eight million dollars out there.
Body cameras will come out of your budget?
No, this is the overall fleet, this is the overall capital. This isn't mine. As much as I'd like to have the police chief working for the Public Works director, I, I'm not sure. We have a lot more really interesting equipment if it was the two of us picking them together, that's how you'd say that.
Put a plow in front of a cruiser.
Well, I, I've not, I've seen those guys drive. I'm not sure that would be different. So, just, just an observation. So if we run into stuff too, that's fine. Um, so, uh, there's things like, there's a big number in there, like one point eight million dollars. That's because every decade or so, pu- public safety and public works, we have to deal with radios. And all of our trucks and all of our equipment out there. It's a big number, but there's a lot of ways to deal with that. Um, Public Works building two and building three replacements in there and, you know, if you think, if you take a thirteen million dollar construction project, you're looking at ten percent for design. So that's one point three million for design. And I can tell you just from looking this up over the last couple of days, um, as an example, Windsor did a building that's half the size of what we need for twelve million in twenty sixteen. Parker's building was thirteen plus. Um, Adams County is currently value engineering their building down now and designed from seventy-two million to fifty-eight million. Um, uh, Flat River Power Authority in the last couple of years did their, um, campus headquarters again and that was forty-one million by the time they got done. Um, so, those are the kinda numbers we're talking about. As much as I'd like to have a fifty-eight million dollar building, I'm not sure we can do that. It's okay.
Are you thinking, is there any chance of combining those two buildings and making one?
That is actually the plan.
Yeah.
That would be the plan. But in addition to that, some of the things that, um, are, just come from, you know, not doing anything for decades are that entire site, the stormwater sheet flows to the railroad, which was fine in nineteen forty-eight, but is not fine today. Um, I'm glad the railroad hasn't really called us about it. I would say call the Lincoln administration in Washington, see what you guys can work on while you're up there. But those are the kinda things that we have to take care of. And that stormwater question is a million dollars. Because you're draining a nine acre site, as an example. It's not really configured great from a land's perspective, but those are the kinda things out there.
So Keith, what are you doing? You're, you're spending the design money and then in what year is it, twenty twenty-six, what's that thirteen million for just like?
Construction.
But will that be enough?
Nobody's saying it's low.
No, I'm, I'm saying it's low, but this is, part of that, so I'm gonna come back to this as an example in a second, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm just.
You're gonna say you missed a zero at the end of this on a hundred and thirty.
That's right.
Yeah, I, well, you know, we're talking about forty-one million and I'm going, wait a second, that's not gonna cover it.
Uh, I, I didn't put forty-one million there because the number, the percent overspent below would be really high, so, as an example. So then, from down there, you have, you know, major facilities capital in those out years and those are things like, you know, eventually we're gonna wanna do something with the, the library. Do we wanna do an expansion? Do we wanna change the layout? Do we wanna do remodeling the library? Those are questions that we need to plan for in the future. Um, you know, you may get to a position where, I already know you have requests from outside agencies. Like, what do you, what do you do with Town Hall Art Center? As an example, I know that one's floating around. So those are the kinda things that, you know, are out there from a discussion and strategy and standpoint from council's perspective. Um, we have, uh, citywide irrigation and medians. Um, you're gonna see more of that here come this summer. Um, so you can really see the magnitude of our issue. Um, so, uh, most of that irrigation systems in the city are thirty-five plus years old. Several of them are mostly just baling wire and duct tape at this point in time, but, um, those are things we'll have to tackle and that's also part of our strategy under environmental stewardship, is to reduce the amount of water use we have and change those things out. But there's an example of how that works that I personally dealt with this today. So I got some calls about Bowles Plaza, which is as you come in, okay? So the calls I've gotten are related to why are there weeds out there? There's not weeds out there. That's our demonstration partnership with Denver Botanic Gardens to take an old one and to convert it to zero scape over two seasons, because that stuff doesn't happen overnight. So that's exactly what's going on there. So we chose that location. It is a demonstration location with Denver Botanic Gardens.
There's not like a little sign there that says, this is not weeds.
Well, that's usually not, I have to talk to, I'd have to talk to.
Don't pick them.
Yeah, Kelly wouldn't let me put a sign out there that said, bah, you know? So we'd have to come up, we're working on that to go something out there, but as an example, that's, that'll be part of the transition that we have in this community. You know, somebody looks at a median, run it down mineral and they've seen, you know, on and off green, you know, depending on whether the sprinklers are working out there. You know, but that's the kind of transition we're gonna go through as we go through that process to reduce our.
Not to mention right out here, it's nice and yellow.
Uh, well, the reason this is yellow out here, we have a lot of big dogs that come over here. Um, but.
You don't have that many dogs.
Mother Nature, well, you should come and look out my window every day. I can tell you that's probably not true. I see a lot of dogs every day. There's about twenty-five I see every day. So what actually is going on out here is the fact that we have construction going on at Rio Grande Bridge. And it's another couple of weeks before we can open the head gate to get water into Geneva Pond, which is the supply system for here. So Mother Nature did help us out this past week with a little bit of moisture, so we're gonna be able to do something, but it's that sequential things of, you know, figuring stuff out, like irrigation. So, um, if you wanna come hand water though, Jerry, let me know. We're, we're unhappy to get you out there.
I'm gonna get my own problem.
So, um, and then, so the next one there is downtown streetscape. So what you can see over there is, you know, twenty, I just picked twenty-three as a starting year. So, one million dollars, you're looking at design and engineering. Um, then I put in four million, three million, you know, a blank year if you decided to do a big project. One million, one point, one point two, one point two in the out years. You could use that strategy. So the example of putting, say, the Public Works building up there with one big project at thirteen million, what happens is it disrupts everything else that you wanna do if you fund year over year. Where in this downtown situation, you can go year over year to accomplish the same thing, but you're also disrupting downtown on a continuous basis over a decade.
Would it be possible to put that up there, I mean, for the viewers at home and people in this room? I mean, we're talking numbers here without a graph for them.
They're more just.
It's, they're just more examples, examples at this point in time. And then, um, so then, the next, the last line there, the orange line, is overhead, overhead allocation. And we're gonna talk about that more as a specific item. So, you, you can't build millions of dollars in capital without people. And there's a lot, you know, every project that we do, for example, we don't design in-house. I mean, we never have and we don't have enough staff to do that. And you don't necessarily wanna go, for us, we don't wanna go hire a bridge designer, because we're not gonna do a bridge every year. We, we're gonna use consulting firms to do that for us. And so, there's, how do you charge those kinda design contracts? And how do you charge the staff that's completely allocated to managing capital projects, for example? So that's part of the overhead discussion. So, the, this, this is really an example to say, these are the things based on our historical issues of capital that we know are large categories. And then I also bring up things like outside requests, like Town Hall Art Center or Hudson Gardens, for example. And, and so, from a staff perspective, we would like some feedback from council about, what do you think about those broad strategies? What's important to you as we look forward in, in placing things across the next decade from a planning perspective? And how should we think about strategy?
I do have a question on the street maintenance. It's two billion. I thought it was three million in the past.
No, that's actually, this is an addition to that, Jerry.
So this is above and beyond what we already have.
That's correct.
So the baseline is three million-ish.
Yes, so we have the three point one million that's from the fire merger as a result of the fire merger. And then we also have H U T F funds, um, of about one point four million.
Highway user tax.
So that takes it up to about four?
Yep.
Plus two.
Less than additional to you.
How do you decide what's the priorities, I mean?
Within streets or?
I love streets, because everybody's screaming about their streets.
We've got the street.
It's right here. It's on the website. It's the five-year capital plan. It's been on the website. We update it all the time and it's on the website with a map.
So that's how it goes through?
Yeah, so what we do is, so we, but that, you have to remember, that's not like, in this case, not carved in concrete or asphalt. Um, it's.
Is that, is that?
It's more of a gravel mixture.
Yeah.
Does that include the three A money in that, in your?
Well, well, we have not planned the three A money in there. We've started to strategize on that at this point in time, but, you know, we, this, this capital plan that we have now is built on our projected revenue stream plus what we project, we think we can bring in from grant sources over time. And then, you know, that, this is, like I said, it's not sent in concrete or asphalt because it moves around over time. You know, we, we may accelerate a, a project because we're able to access some mobility money or something, so it allows us to move projects around. But at the end of the day, it's still the same dollars, um, that we're attacking. And, and the supplement is for something like, you know, Jerry talks to me a lot about Aberdeen Village.
I'm sharing the message.
I am sure you are. I'm aware of that. That's okay. Well, you stamp, stamp asphalt out there and put your face in the road.
Maybe not my face.
So, so in that case, the challenge with Aberdeen Village is, when Aberdeen Village was built originally, i- it really was built on what would be an old county road section type of profile. You really have almost no base out there and so it's, it's just past the point of going out and be able to, you know, put a mill and, and over on top. You just have to do something about the base or three years from now, you're gonna be in the exact same scenario. So, our steps in that case are to, you know, we're gonna do some work out there this year to try and do some pilot work out there. We're also gonna be meeting with the neighborhood later this year to talk about, wh- what do we really want out there? Do we wanna keep it what I consider to be a rural section with no curb and gutter? Or do we talk about curb and gutter? Because that affects drainage, for example. So that's what we'll be going through in the fall with Aberdeen Village out there.
What's a pilot work? What does that mean?
Um, so we'll probably, um, we're, we, we've talked about using some different strategies for how we redo the base. So we may take a half a block and attack that, um, with some different strategies. Because some of it, sometimes with it, you can do as many core sections as you want, but sometimes once you get that base up, it, it can be different underneath. You can end up with spongy material. If you're marking Grand Junction, you can have radioactive mine tailings. There's a lot of different things you can have out there. So, that's what we're gonna do. We'll probably, we may do some skim patching out there this summer. We're working through that right now. To try and to come up with some different strategies for that.
What about this twenty twenty-six at a hundred and eighty-five percent?
So that, I've used that as the example of.
Examples.
That, that, what that is, is that's an example of what happens if all of a sudden you have, you, you have to do one, one project in one year. It takes everything else off the table.
Well, we want, oh, they really wanna talk about strategy.
So.
So much the numbers.
Yeah. So from a strategy perspective, does, we're, we're interested in your opinion on, do, do you think a strategy of accelerating the work to make greater impact sooner to say offset construction costs? Or what's important to you in, if you do accelerate some of the work, because you can't accelerate all of it, what would be important in looking at that strategy going forward?
So I'll, I'll start with that. Yeah, I, the issuance of bonds, I think, is important to be able to do that. Maybe a conservative approach, not, you know, the full amount that we could go for.
Right, so when we, um, talk about bonds, you know, we have a couple of other debt options as well, not just bonds. We can use bonds, certainly. We have to go to a voter approval in order to issue those bonds. The other part of that is, you know, we can do leases. We've done leases in the past, so we, he, we mentioned there are police radios. So, it might be something that we wanna go directly to a vendor and look at some leasing options just for that specific project, which we could do. And then the other is, we have certificates of participation, which we've used in the city in the past, um, which really just requires council, um, to provide the authority to issue some COPs. But in order to do that, you have to have an asset, you have to pledge an asset. And so these are all just different mechanisms that we can use and Reed and I have been, uh, talking about that and working on getting a financial advisor on board, um, so that we can really see which, um, method is best for us and which projects would align better with some of the, the debt options. Um, so when we're thinking about issuing bonds or leases or COPs, we will definitely come back to you with a strategy of, of what projects might align best. But really just wanting to be able to see, you know, do you have an appetite for that? Are you looking at that? There's some potential cost savings. It does cost, of course, there's an interest, um, associated with it, but it does help accelerate those projects, too.
And just for clarification, this is a discussion Tiffany had is, and Mark is, you, because it's sales tax, you can't bond against the total.
Right, yeah, we are limited in how much we can bond because it is, um, a, a less reliable revenue source, I'll call it, on sales tax revenues, I'm very.
Volatile.
Volatile. Um, as opposed to like a geo bond where you're pledging property taxes, which are a little more stable. But definitely, it'll be a part of a financial strategy that we will.
I'm definitely interested in this, uh, the COPs. Um, I think we need and owe it to the public to start getting some work done. And I know, my biggest concern is, do we have the supplier, do we have the vendor, do we have the vampire to actually get this work done? You know, I, I imagine every other cities might be similar to Littleton to where they too are looking at, uh, a lot of road improvements, stuff like that, especially with the, uh, the infrastructure bill and all the stuff that's coming out. So I think the sooner we can get some people under contract, the better.
I would agree. To, to add to that, it's actually, interestingly enough, what we're seeing is not necessarily, um, our issues are material and transportation. Like, the longest lien item right now, planning wise, is, besides materials, is trucking. So when you wanna do a big job, you gotta plan two or three months in advance now for the trucking to support that job.
Right.
As an example.
See, manager wanted to chime in?
Yeah, you know, I think on the strategy here, this is something Keith and I and Tiffany have been talking a lot about ever since the voters approved this year, this past November. But, you know, the pay as you go, in essence, is what the example they're trying to show you. Many cities, that's, that's the policy. That's where the council will go. They do not want debt, for all sorts of different reasons. I think the climate here that we see today, just based on construction inflation alone, I think it's to the city's advantage financially to bond. And quite honestly, to bond as much as you can. Um, I think, to your point, Patrick, about, you know, the public is looking for us, they, you know, the, the magnitude of the approval of this bond. Um, I think to your point, Patrick, about, you know, the public is looking for us. They, you know, the, the magnitude of the approval of this bond measure says they want improvements. So I think to deliver that, I think the bonding is, is the answer. Now, both Keith and Tiffany and Reid, they've been talking to, uh, a specific individual. His name is D. Weiser. He's probably done about every bond issue in the state of Colorado here. To come in and actually talk with council about the details of this. And so I don't know if we've scheduled that yet.
Not yet.
Okay. You're going to learn a lot from him and he'll talk to you about, you know, the, the nuances of all of this, of your options, all the options. And I think I'm confident that what the council is going to say just is that you're going to want to bond something. So then you're going to, and I'm, I don't want to steal your thunder here, Keith, but you know, I know there's other examples about if you bond, well, then of course, what's the strategy of identifying what's the priority? And, uh, that's the fun stuff in my opinion, uh, because you do get to take on a lot of big work pretty quickly. And you also need to think strategically that you, you spread it around the community. You don't want all the construction in one place because then you're going to get a different kind of complaint. So you've got to be careful about how you lay this out. But the point I just really want to make and why some councils, um, you know, hesitate about debt has a lot to do, there's a cost of issuance with a bond. You pay a fee for this. And you are contrasting that against the actual cost of inflation for construction, not just the Boulder, Denver Boulder CPI. It's not that. It's the cost of inflation for construction. Keith reported on that. C dot was seeing what?
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent. So in this case, in my opinion, is, this is easy. So if you bond now with the cost of construction, you are easily beating inflation over time. And so I think that's why, you know, I think.
Makes sense.
Yeah, we're excited to talk to council about this issue.
Is a C O P a type of bond or is that something completely separate?
Yeah, it's a debt instrument. And so it's completely separate. It has a different structure and it's, um, kind of unique to Colorado, I think. It allows you to issue debt without the requirement of a ballot question.
Right.
But you do have to have a pledged asset and you still follow all the process of, of a bond, sort of. You still have to issue.
With your truck up there as an asset.
Yeah.
And your driver's.
Buildings, buildings is a typical use of C O Ps.
Yeah. So our, so our museum, um, it was actually, uh, when we refurbished the museum, we actually issued C O Ps to include that by our station twelve and, uh, fleet building. We issued C O Ps for that, um, certificates of participation. The courthouse was a certificate of participation as well that will be paid off soon. Um, so we've used them here. Um, it's just a, a, a different way to issue debt without, um, a vote required.
Yeah. And I think that's the key is, you know, by the time we get this on the ballot, if it gets on the ballot in this November, you know, let's assume it doesn't pass. I mean, now what are we up against? Now we're back to doing a C O P or something like that. So I would rather not look at a bond and go with the C O P. But again, I don't know what I don't know.
But is that the same person we had come in last year or two years ago that you were talking about bringing in? Did we have somebody come in and talk to us?
Um.
Which was very good.
I don't think it was Dee, but, you know, I'm trying to remember, what was that?
The, the only person I can recall coming in was talking about, um, the, uh, the Development Authority or, um, Metro District.
Yeah.
Is that what you're thinking? The Metro Districts?
We had the Metro District presentation, Jerry.
I wonder what, maybe that's what it was. Yeah. It was very informative.
Yeah, I think that's pinnacle, uh, pinnacle that came in, I think.
Yeah, pinnacle.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
Yeah. No, we, we've never had anyone come in and talk about, um, bonds because we'd never had a, a desire.
Yeah, we do.
I mean, we could do both, right? You could do a C O P quickly and then look at the bond for this year and next year.
In fact, I think that's likely.
Yep.
So again, C O Ps, in my experience, are around buildings typically, because you've got the asset that's easy to pledge against.
So like the building two and three would be, uh, a, a prime example of, uh, when we can use C O Ps.
So you can't, you can't leverage a building and use that money for a, a road?
I have not seen roads funded by C O Ps, but we could, I mean, I, I don't know. That's why we have D. Weiser and.
Yeah, I doubt you would do that, but, um.
No, those are usually funded by G O or, um, sales tax revenue.
Yeah, okay.
Question to the question?
Uh, yeah, question and comment. So I'm in alignment with Patrick and Kyle on the bonds or C O Ps. I think, you know, accelerating projects is great. Um, and I'd love to put more of that toward the streets, um, capital maintenance. Can you help me understand, like pretend I don't know anything like about street work? How long does it take from start to finish for like a regular neighborhood or like a block, um, from start of construction when they block off everything? Like what are we looking at in terms of disruption?
It depends on what you're doing.
Okay.
So if you're just going in and, um, you're going to come in with the big milling machine, take a couple of inches of asphalt off. So basically you're taking the top and bringing it back down to the base. Um, usually what you do is in the season before that or earlier, you do the concrete work ahead of time. Concrete patches you need to do on the curb and gutter.
What do you mean in a season before?
Usually the, like.
The year before?
The year before is pretty common. If you, we, part of the reason that's been done here is because of money. You know, if, and also contractor availability. This year, we've got the contractor out ahead in this season. So you go do that work and then the milling takes about a day and then the paving takes about a day and you're in and out. Other maintenance methods like slurry seals and chip seals, you're in and out and it, you know, you're in and out in a day, but you have, you know, on either side of that, you have no parking and things like that. So people are out of the area.
You mean this will be inconvenient to folks?
No, not at all. We fly in with black helicopters at night. So if I could do that, I would. So, so those are base, kind of the basic maintenance. If you're getting into something that's much, um, larger, uh, like, like the example we were talking about with Aberdeen Village where you got to take it all the way down to the base. That contractor is going to go in there and they're going to mill the top layer. Then they're probably going to mill out the base that's in there. And then from there, you're going to have to go in and you're going to have to do work, um, in the base level in there to do compaction, to assure what you have, to make sure your drainage profile is correct. And then you're going to bring back material in and start to build that out. That can usually take, you're looking at weeks, usually in that particular case.
Like two weeks, like a month?
I'd say at least a month.
Usually a month. And that can be extended depending on, um, i- if you are, you know, one of the things that we're really spending strategic time on is making sure that our game plan is known and we are in partnership with the game plan of all the other utilities that operate in our community, whether it's Denver Water, whether it's Excel. So that, you know, typically what we like to do is get them in ahead of time if they're doing smaller work or if it's big one, you're going to do it at the same time. So that can add time to the schedule. Um, but we usually try and get out in front of that. A lot of times we like to have the utilities in there a year beforehand. So they'll do their work. You'll do a patch and then you come back in and do it a year later.
Like with Aberdeen, you're going what, three feet deep?
Um, I don't know. It, that'd be above my head, so probably not. But, you know, usually in that particular case, I would say we're going to have to go down at least twenty-four. You know, and we're, part of it's going to be, we're going to have to see what happens in there because my, you know, it, it's like the situation we have in Trailmark too. We have water table issues out there, for example, in Trailmark. As an example, when Mark was the project manager, when we built Fire Station Nineteen at Trailmark, we over excavated to twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet.
Twenty-two feet.
Wow.
Really?
Mm-hmm.
And then put back material, then put it back down.
We've dug a hole to twenty. Yeah.
That you know. To make sure that the material there was.
Stable.
Stable.
Okay.
The closer you get.
You build sinkholes.
Yeah, the closer you get to the, the, the mountains, the more movement you tend to get based on soils. It's just the way the soils are made up out here. So. But still, even after twenty-two feet of compaction, we still have movement in the driveway, in the concrete slab driveway. You know, so that's just, that's just the nature of building here in Colorado. So you're going to have to do some of that over excavation in a road like that. So that can be weeks to, weeks to a month. Now, when we start talking about something like the Denver Water Project downtown, you're talking about, not only are you going in and, you, if you're going to put a seventy-inch pipe in the ground, you know, that, that's a really big pipe this way and you, you got to excavate that whole area. You got to do compaction. You got to bring it in. And then in a situation like that, um, the more urbanized the street is, whether it's a collector or arterial, then you've got more traffic control, which can extend the length of the project because you got to try and get things open. Or for example, other things that can affect it. If you're in a purely industrial area, you can extend your operational days. But if like you're doing, if you're doing construction in Santa Fe, you really have to almost avoid the A M and P M P as an example during construction. So traffic can still flow. So that can kind of extend to that.
Is there like a set like length that Public Works does at a time? That's like a best practice in terms of like, like?
No, usually what you try and do is you try and maximize what you can do at a time. A lot of times it's driven purely by money as far as you can go. You know, that's part of it. But then using different techniques, we're going to use a technique this year that hasn't been used in this community before called a paving train. Is the simplest way to put it. So basically it is a giant train of equipment. And the first one is milling up the asphalt. It's going back through. You're putting hot asphalt rejuvenator in it. And then the hot asphalt is going back down. So you're actually going down further than the two inches. You're going into the base and you're bringing all that back in in one shot. And it works great on straight roads. It's the easiest way to put it, on straight roads. Curved roads, not so much because it's, it's like a train moving down the road. But in a situation like that, you can actually get an entire lane done and reopen it at the end of the day. Cause you're compacting it right behind it with the rollers. So it's really cool, um, to use. We haven't used that here before, but on a long straight stretch, on, on a line arterial or something, it's great to use. So we're going to, we're going to use that this summer for the first time. Thank you. We'll let you know when that happens so you can go see it.
I agree with what's been said. I think we need to accelerate, um, for a couple of reasons. We don't want ongoing construction. And because this is money that the citizens have given to us, we don't want to hold on to it too long. We want to make sure that they know we're taking the money and doing something with it for the betterment of the community, something like that. I agree.
So in here, you're, in your report, uh, you, you mentioned the citizen review committee. Why not the transportation board?
Well, we actually have a separate one to do that, so.
Maybe, but why have another committee?
Well, let's have the discussion when we get to that.
Yeah.
So, go ahead.
Yeah. So I agree with the bonding, obviously. Getting money while they're getting is good. And I actually, I do agree that the streets projects are probably amongst the highest priorities. And I would actually almost advocate for kind of shifting some of the facility capital construction and the irrigation and median construction funds over into si- into the streetscape. And the reason I'm saying that too is because on the environmental sustainability standpoint too, since we're kind of at the nascent stages of like laying out not only a committee, but like guidance and documentation, how they might impact especially future buildings. I think that's where some of the biggest gains are going to be in getting environmental sustainability metrics down for the city. So looking at building electrification, you know, energy efficient HVACs and stuff like that. I think having those plans in place prior to bidding out design and construction for them would be my preference. And I know we're not going to have as many gains made in sustainability for street repair anyway. So, you know, shifting more of that kind of facilities money into streets, not to say that I don't care about buildings two and three. I know we'll give you an extra budget for duct tape, you know, in the coming years, but.
It already looks like duct tape.
But I just, I, I guess I want to make sure we have those sustainability metrics kind of more in place before we start doing major capital work.
So.
Facility stuff, but you can argue against.
Well, we're, you're going to see later in this year a facilities master plan and we'll be laying that out in there. For example, we did incorporate that in this building, but part of the challenge in this building is I can't take on all the HVAC at one time. Cause it's seventy years old or not seventy, it feels like seventy, but it's only forty. Um, the wood burning stoves we took out, but. So part of our strategy is, you know, we, we intend to design to that standard going forward.
Okay.
As we go through it, so.
And sustainability is good, but we specifically talked about medians. You know, I mean, I get phone calls about it. Why does that look so horrible on minerals? So I think we can't ignore it, even if it's a step in the right direction. And in zero scape and something, I mean, we can't say, oh, we're not going to do this big thing that we promised because we have something else.
Well, I wasn't saying to defer it. I was mostly just saying like, so we had a zero scape plan in place prior to then going out and repairing irrigation systems for which we'll lose money in the long term as the price of the water goes up too. And that's, so I wasn't saying ignore, but to prioritize street over the other things that might have a component that needs that master planning.
You'll see that master planning over the next six or eight months. We've already done a lot of that work. We're doing work with Denver Botanic Gardens for mineral concepts now. And part of that's going to tie to the water resources plan, which is, well, you and I have talked about that, so.
I just think we need to be careful about what we said we were going to do.
Yeah.
And make sure that it, that everything, um, moves forward in some fashion, even though priorities may shift.
I was going to say, I think we have consensus on the strategies, but Councilman Milamet has one question.
I just have one small question. As you're going, as you're going forward and you're doing these projects, communication, I think is super, super key. And I mean, really promoting what you're doing, right? And saying, here's your money, hard dollars at work. So I know you're probably working on that.
So we, we actually, um, like when we did the federal bowls intersection, we make sure we had, we had signage out there, you know, during the project. So we'll be doing that throughout the process. But one of the other things that we actually spent time within, um, the Public Works team today, talking specifically about is, you know, a lot of the dashboard here is, I think council and the community have seen over the last few years, has really been about planning. And we're, we spent a lot of time today talking about how we're going to integrate our performance measurements, our asset management platform to be able to show the execution of that work, because we feel that that's very important. That's like, we just talked about storytelling. That's very important to that. And so we actually are spending a lot of time on that progression already, um, because we have a lot, we have a lot, a ton of work going on right now that we want to share. And a lot of that's, or, you know, from the fire merger, for example, and we want the community to know that that's out there and hitting the ground. Um, and so that's part of our strategy right now as well.
So you got the direction on the strategies there?
I think so, yeah.
Clear? All right. So we got two, overhead allocation and?
Um, and then I'll add one more thing.
Okay.
Um, I did want to just address the overhead allocation and, um, just kind of give you some best practices and our recommendation to provide some overhead allocation. You know, really capital projects take people and they take time and not just Public Works, but also other, um, staff in the organization. And, you know, we always talk about federal grants and they provide some guidance on what is allowable to be allocated to projects. And so, you know, we want to take a look at some guidelines from O M B circular eighty-seven to make sure that we're in line with that. And, uh, so we've kind of put together a strategy of what that's going to look like. We talk about design and construction, and then there's other services, attorney's office, engineering, transportation, procurement, finance. And really the key is to make sure that we're using a systematic and rational methodology that's defensible. And that's what we've put together, um, just as an example for you this evening. And so the methodology, uh, in, includes a couple of, of, um, areas. So we have direct charge personnel, which we've already talked about. So earlier this year, we allocated one point five F T Es to three A funding to help oversee all those projects. So that's what we would call direct charge personnel. The other one is, uh, project management allocation, and this would include a portion of Public Works personnel, just based on an allocation of hours. So we will work with Keith and his team and direct charge some of their hours to particular projects and keep track of that. So we know how much time they're spending on those projects. Again, best practice. And then the last one is doing a project allocation for, as I mentioned, city attorney's office, finance, procurement, some of those other divisions. And again, it's going to be based on an allocation of hours. So working with the departments, getting idea, time study through several methods to find out how much time they're spending on these projects and then allocating that as well. So I did an example.
Where's the contracts, like, uh, consultant?
So consultants would be a direct cost of the project. So it'd be part of design and construction.
Yeah. And where's that up there?
Uh, that's not part of this. That's the actual, uh, cost of the project itself.
That's the other ninety percent.
Okay.
Part of the other ninety percent.
Right. Sort of. Um, so I just wanted to give you an example. So let's say our, uh, C I P projects for Public Works are about seven point three million. We went through our time studies. We worked with the department. We already have the one point five F T Es allocated, so we're going to direct allocate that. Um, and then we came up with about two hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars of project management. So that's Keith and his group. And then another two hundred and seventy-four thousand of, uh, attorney's office, finance, all those others. So the total personnel related allocated cost would be about seven hundred and forty-two thousand. It happens to come out to be about ten percent of the total project. This is going to vary. I don't want us to get hung up or stuck on the ten percent number. This is just an example. But it's really going to depend on how much time is being spent on those projects. And as long as we follow that methodology, um, then that is, that's the direction and the, the recommendation that we have.
So the idea, idea is not to have a flat overhead.
Right.
A lot of places just charge fifteen percent overhead right off the top.
Right. Um, you know, in talking with our auditors in some other cities, um, it, it's, uh, not as defensible. So if you have an allocation of actual hours through time management system, um, a study that you've done, it, it's a little more defensible to provide that if there's ever any. So if you have an allocation of actual hours through time management system, a study that you've done, it's a little more defensible to provide that if there's ever any concerns or questions.
So accounting is already set up for direct charge?
A new ERP will allow that. But yes, we do have the ability to assign particular hours for certain people, but we're really going to be relying on that time study that we're going to be working with the departments on upfront. And we will update that accordingly throughout the.
You're not going to come to us asking for a new program? Seems like every time we turn around, we're asking for a new program.
We, yeah, we're already planning on this. We were going to do this regardless of three or not. So it'll be part of our ERP system and making sure that we have the ability to allocate to projects.
Yeah, we want to, like in our case, we've, we've already been in some work on this because we want to make sure that, for example, any allocations that went into the 3.1 on from the, from the fire money, were being allocated appropriately based on the need. Like, you know, Tiffany mentioned, direct cost personnel. The people we're talking about are doing direct engineering and capital projects and direct field inspection on capital projects. So their direct allocation to that work. So, you know, we already do some of this. I mean, I'm allocated for multiple funds, for example, you know, all the time. Mark was sitting in this chair before me, you know, so, you know, we just, it's just part of business for us, so.
Do you want any, I mean, you're just FYI for us. I mean, yeah, I think the overhead allocation to the fund makes a lot of sense rather than, you know.
Go about 10%.
Well, this is something we'll be able to actually report on as part of our performance metrics too, as we go through work.
I did look at some other cities and there are some projects that you're going to see pretty high allocation, but that's because there's certain personnel who are working directly on that project. So that's why I want to just caution, it's not going to always be 10%.
Tiffany told me I can't charge the C D O number, which is 25. That is the current C D O overhead number. And that's, that's an example of why we always try and we try and drag projects to local management as opposed to C D O management. Because the, we can typically do that project for seven or nine percent. And we, this is an ongoing issue with C D O across the state, so we're working with them to help them get better.
Decent of you.
Is the way we would say that, so.
All right, now we'll talk about the citizen.
So from a citizen committee perspective, there's a lot of ways to do this. One of the things that we've talked about as a staff is, first off is having, if we create a committee that's going to meet 12 months a year, you're, you're going to be taking up a lot of staff time. That'll happen, that's number one. So then the question comes is, is how do you build that committee? And one of the comments that was talked about early, which Councilor Valdez mentioned, is using the transportation and mobility board. Yes, that's, I, that's, to me, that's fine. But on the other hand, one of the other things is, is there's also going to be a significant portion of this capital that's not spent just on transportation and infrastructure. And, and we think it's important to somehow come up with a way for that representation to be part of the committee. So one of the suggestions that came up was you could draw members that came from sitting committees. One of the ones we put an example of not would be something like liquor board as a, you know, as an example of why, maybe they're there to bring the liquor, I don't know. But, you know, maybe they're a participant on the committee. But as an example of that is, is bringing from that. And then if council wanted to supplement that with other individuals or they wanted to select a chair, but have a very distinct process to do that. You also don't want to overburden yourself with having to go through. The first year you do this, you would have a ton of interviews yourselves as a council. I mean, I'm just gonna, I would expect that. So that would be out there. And then one of the proposals we talked about was from a timing perspective is that, you know, Tiffany's group closes the books basically at the end of the first quarter for the previous year. So the timing of creating, we would recommend creating an annual report, which is specific to 3A dollars, how they were spent over the past year, how the allocations went, what the overhead looked like, what, what specific projects and what was accomplished during that year. And then what we would recommend is in the, in the charter for this particular committee, in that charter council lays out, these are the things based on the ballot initiative that we want evaluated each year to see if we're meeting these standards. And in the specific action of that committee is to evaluate against the benchmarks that you give them, the criteria. Because if you don't box that in, you have the potential for this thing to go in a lot of directions. You can, that's another choice if council would like to do that. But the path that we've, an example we put up there is you create a committee, they meet twice a year, staff prepares an annual report based on the criteria, what's been spent, the detail. This committee reviews that, you know, obviously staff represent and all those things. But then they do their own evaluation based on the criteria that's laid out in the charter. And then they, they create their own memo and report to come to council to report on how they feel the city performed against the criteria that council said was in the ballot and how we're going to do that.
The likelihood of them, I, I see, I can see that as almost being a rubber stamp. Council takes something to a board or committee and rarely do our boards or anything challenge staff that much.
In this case, what we've actually talked about was we would present and give them the report and then it's up to the committee to go forward from there. We can answer technical questions, but, you know, or maybe we do additional research for them and bring that back for their next meeting. But their objective is to create a report back to you.
And I'm not opposed to the committee. I'm just structurally wise, I don't want it just to be a rubber stamp. They get something from you and they, they agree.
No, I agree very much with that because this is when you, when we go for a ballot initiative and ask them, the voters to, to, to say, we will spend our money on this to invest in our community. They need to be able to say, you know, and that's part of when we talk about what's a priority, you know, that committee may think your priorities are incorrect.
I'm, I'm not clear on the order. So when, who does the charter and when? Is that before the meeting?
We, council has to create the committee. So we, we would create the charter and you would adopt that as part of creating the committee.
Okay, and then wouldn't the evaluation criteria come before the annual report? So the annual report can let people know how well we've met the evaluation?
So, so what we were proposing is we get feedback from you, we draft a charter and how the committee is going to work. We come back to council, you approve the committee formation because you have to, you have to put that into ordinance. And then as part of that, the charter is adopted. That's what we've done in other committees. That then sets the framework that would then create the annual report that then would go to the committee. Because this, you know, we're talking about, it's going to take us till next spring to have a year under our bell, create the committee to do the reporting and all that kind of thing.
And so how do you envision this election process working for boards and commissions? I'm not opposed to it, it just looks like.
I think the recommendation here is to basically put out a request for anyone that's on a current board or commission to say, hey, would you want to serve on this?
And then we interview and select or.
Depends on what the interest is from.
I, I know it may be more work, but when I think of a citizen committee, I think of also citizens, citizens, you know. And I would almost advocate for some of the members of this committee not to be in a board and commission. I don't know, it just seems a little more, boards and commissions can be a little close to home, maybe in a good way and a not a good way. They might not have, might be not quite as arms length.
I mean, I think, I mean, I'll speak for Keith here, that I think the recommendation is to try to narrow it down because you're, you know, we could have 200 people want to apply to be on this review committee. And, you know, looking at the, the ballot language, all it said is shall the city, the city shall annual report the progress of such reports and the expenditures of such revenues to the citizens with a review by a board or a commission appointed by council, so.
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I just, I, I realize it could be an onerous task. It just seems like a citizen committee to means people from the community that may not have ties to the city for what, in a good way or a bad way. Board and commission, people kind of tend to know how things work a little bit in a good way, but then also they're kind of close to things too and might not have arms length. But I don't want to make an onerous task for 200 people. So I just throw that out to the group and see what.
What kind of like strength are you looking for, for this committee? Are you looking for folks that are heavy in finance or are you looking, I mean, what do you, or in transportation?
We're looking for. We're looking for, not them, it's what council's looking for. So what are you looking for, Kelly?
Well, I just know somebody who's got a very strong finance background, but he's friends with a library and museum.
So, well, I mean, just, just from my experiences, I've, and Mark can speak to this as well, based on his, you know, knowledges. You know, I've found over the years in working with citizen boards and committees, and you all go through the interview processes, at some level, we, we do try and create diversity in experience and knowledge in, in our boards. And, you know, the transportation board, which we deal with, is very much like that. And, and we think that that's good. So I, I think part of the reason like we suggested, for example, pulling from the existing boards is you're going to bring somebody in there from the cultural services board. It's going to have a different dynamic, you know, is should we be investing more in this? Should we make sure funds are going out of capital to invest in the library or the museum or the farm or something like that? So, you know, that, that's part of, I mean, that's part of what Councilor Grove is, is, is talking about a little bit as well. So I, and that's what you want, we're happy to work with that committee. I mean, Mark, you've been through a few of these over the years.
Yeah, so, Pam, let me, as an example, you know, staff's recommending that we work through the existing boards and commissions to maybe fill in this new committee. You could have, you know, say, seven or 11 members, you could have a few that are ad hoc, so it could be a blend.
That's what I, that's what I'm thinking. Not a total citizen committee where we're filling it, but at least some representatives. And you bring up a good point that it shouldn't be all from one board if we could get it. So we get it skewed, you know, that we try to get diversity among the boards.
Well, I would think if we did that, you know, I, I mean, one of the reasons or the rationale is that I can see of doing current board and commission members is starting a new committee and getting that up and running and understanding what the process is, is arduous a little bit?
Yes, I get that.
I got a couple of words.
So having those people that already kind of understand the process to be able to review it. And again, they're not building this from the ground up, they're just kind of reviewing it and saying, yeah, this. And the council has the criteria, hey, these are what we want you to look at.
I just would advocate that we have some people that are not on boards, commissions, and that we'd have from those people that were on boards and commissions, that we have some diversity where it isn't like five from transportation and one from whatever.
Oh, I think that would be the charter we would set up. Yeah, you have to have one, only one.
So I, that, that's what I'd advocate, realizing that it, it kind of is harder to do. And maybe, I, I don't know how you can do that, like you have to have certain criteria, whatever those criteria are, that you can meet both of these times and that you, you know, you have some experience in terms of, you know, criteria matching its projects and goals or something. I, that's my.
I was going to actually agree with you on that too, that it would be great to have, you know, broader diversity of other non-boards and commissions members standing. But in the inception phase, having folks that are experienced with boards and commissions and how they function and the rule setting and the charter creation and working out all the kinks in it. It might be best to have a more experienced group of individuals working with city government, start off that first period. And then to Mark's point, you know, have, you know, four or five ad hoc members that we add on in the next iteration of it or something like that, just to get it running. But I mean, those are details to be worked out as we go, I think, and when we see the actual draft charter.
Details that we're, we need to work out.
Well, yeah, I mean, to.
Just once a group forms, the group starts forming together and then if you start bringing in new people, I mean, you know, the people will turn over eventually, but.
Twice a year.
Yeah, but.
And that's part of the issue. I mean, they're, they better be up to speed each meeting.
Yeah, it's true.
Right.
I mean, I don't know if you can recommend.
I mean, look at our transportation board, it's taken forever for them. It, it is sadly.
You can come on me with them Thursday night, we'll be here.
From your experience, Mark, or anybody that's worked with a lot of these boards, is there a way to efficiently recruit citizens? I mean, we do it as part of our, you know, boards and commissions.
What if we just asked all, sent an email out to all the boards and commission members right now and say, hey, would you be interested? Just to see what the interest is, because maybe no one wants to serve on another board.
Entirely possible.
So that's entirely possible. They say, no, I don't know, no way.
This might be.
Might be good to do another one.
The transportation board has a lot of talented people and knowledgeable right there.
Yeah, so, I mean, with the idea of people serving on boards, they're, I mean, we have, you know, they're all regular citizens, so there's nothing different. And we have regular citizens that are very involved with the city that are not on a board or a commission, so I don't.
Also, also too, thinking about our boards and commissions, they have a certain bend. Like you mentioned, the arts, they're very focused on the arts and they're very passionate about that and want to spend money on arts or H P B. They're very passionate about preservation and we could start to get a little bit of a pull on interest where I would think, not necessarily a, a citizen might have a little bit less of a predisposed towards certain types of things based on their lack of experience with the city.
And you won't know that until they get on.
Right, they could, they could be predisposed on something.
I would say someone that wants to volunteer for this probably has interests and opinions, one would think. City manager, yes.
Yeah, I think if, I would suggest that if like maybe the council, you talk about whether or not you're interested in adding ad hoc positions. If you are to this concept here, then to me, that's probably good enough direction where staff can go back and try to figure out, what does the charter actually say? How would we recommend to council that we approach the existing boards and commissions plus how many ad hoc and how would you recruit all this? We can flush out the detail. I think flushing out the charter, a draft charter would be real important to communicate to the existing boards and commissions as well as any ad hoc. So they understood, well, what's being expected of me? So it'd be hard to go to them now asking, hey, do you have interest in this without seeing the charter? So I think that would be my suggestion, maybe a little conversation, are you interested in ad hoc or not? Because I'm looking at Keith and Tiffany because you guys will have to live with this beyond that first.
I think Mark's right on target because if you, that, to, to me, that's really a differentiation. If you, this is really about the strategy of how you want to put the committee together. We'll go back and work on the charter, build that together, come back and spend time with you, talk about how the process would work, how we would do pre-education before the first time, all that kind of stuff to get them up to speed. So everybody was going through that process together. So is to go to Mark's question is, is we can draw from existing boards and commissions, there is a value to that. We've also heard there's some discussion amongst you about some ad hoc members that might have a different view. If we went with a committee that was, say, 11 as an example, you can mix both of those together to, to accomplish that.
That seems big.
I would say five. Yeah, I was, I was saying seven.
What's that?
It's only twice a year, so you're not.
But I'm saying five. I mean, you get 11 different opinions, you're going to be one to two times a year.
How about seven?
I love that.
I think seven is a little bit better.
Actually just volunteered to facilitate.
I think.
I think you're on the right track and exactly what Mark said.
So you come back with more detail.
Yeah, good. In fact, I think you have, maybe have a slide that talks about next steps. There's, isn't there a date in July?
No, so July 12th is when we have tentatively scheduled to come back and discuss the capital investment strategy, which would include the draft of the committee charter as well as a draft of our next topic, which is establishment of the fund. Because we want to formally establish the fund via ordinance. So July 12th is when we anticipate coming back with some of these deliverables for you.
So just to be clear with the committee, you're good with non-board members as well or just sticking with board members?
Yeah, I want to see the plan, but yeah.
I want a mix.
Mix?
Mix.
I'd like a mix of it as well.
Sounds like.
Yep, we have a direction, thanks.
Easy. Seven and a half months.
And I'm being sure. It got moved to July 19th.
Oh.
Did it?
Thank you, Sam.
Yeah, there was. Thank you, Sam.
July 12th. I appreciate that extra week, thanks.
Yeah.
Establishment of the person, is anything else you wanted to?
Yes, so I have two, two last things. So the establishment.
Before we, are you going to give us a, suggest a mix, three fours, one fourth or whatever, a board to non-board?
They got to think about it.
Yeah, we'll come back with the charter, the charter will include that. We'll put that as part of the charter.
In fact, I think Keith made the point here, you probably don't need representation from the liquor board. So we'll think through a staff, what we think is probably, you know, an appropriate mix of boards and commissions. Obviously list all boards so you can see that rationale.
Thank you, sorry, I just wanted to.
Some question about liquor.
Yeah, so a couple more things. One is, you know, we want to formally establish the fund. We already have in our city code, the capital projects fund, which includes H E T F funds and the building use tax as two sources of revenue. Now we have our 3.1 million from the fire merger. So we want to establish a separate fund specifically for 3A. So we will bring a draft to you, which would include definitions of what is a capital project, what's included, how is it funded? We will review it, so kind of those highlights of, of the creation of the fund. So we'll bring it to ordinance, so that'll be included as a draft on July 19th. We talked about sub-funds in that as well. So one of the things that Keith and I have talked about is, you know, pulling out maybe building as a separate sub-fund. And then, and, and this is more for internal reporting purposes when we report out, it'll be inclusive of all of that. But just for our tracking purposes, maybe split out by the, the types of projects that we're doing, so buildings and then streets and I T.
Just for reporting, not for like a quota of this, this X amount of dollars needs to go in. to go into there or spend on there.
The one fund that we have talked about is a permanent establish is a fleet fund, which would, really, the initial money would be reseating that fund, and then it would become self-perpetuating over time, because we would do chargebacks each month as a vehicle depreciates, so that that replacement is there when the time comes, would be the, would be the goal. The only other broad kind of takeout we've talked about there also is I T capital potentially as well, but that would be sub-reporting. The only standalone below that might be a free fund that we've talked about.
So it's just a, another way for us to report and kind of things internal. So again, we'll be bringing that, a draft of that ordinance forward. The one last thing that I did want to add is, you know, we're talking about projects and moving forward, and we have inflation concerns and lead times on getting equipment for some projects that we have currently budgeted. So I did want to kind of mention a couple of projects that are going to need an additional appropriation that we want to bring forward. So I did want to mention that, because they kind of tie into capital improvements. So last year, I believe it was passed in 2022, we have seen, in 2021, we had additional H U T F revenues come in as a result of the Senate bill that was passed recently. And we had some estimates, but they came in higher than we anticipated. And so instead of waiting until the 2023 budget process to allocate those or appropriate those additional H U T F funds, we want to go ahead and bring those forward so that we can get ahead of inflation costs potentially, so we can see some cost savings at this, at the city, and just really kind of jumpstart some of those, those projects with that H U T F money, specific for streets and infrastructure. We do have to report back to this date on an annual basis on what we spend that money on, but do want to bring that forward so we can go ahead and jumpstart some of those projects. The other is, in our five-year plan, we had anticipated replacing some streetlights throughout the city, and we have ordered 10 poles, but we want to, again, ahead of the inflation, we've been offered a discount on that, and so we want to advance purchase some of those street poles that we anticipated.
Traffic signal poles.
Traffic.
Inter-signers, traffic signal.
Sorry, traffic signal poles. We want to go ahead and order those, get them in the queue so that we can start that project now. So again, this is something that was anticipated in 2023, but we just want to appropriate it this year.
But are they designed for what our needs are going to be? I mean, we just don't want to go out and buy poles for the signal.
Oh, no, 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 we have, they're tied into the spec section.
Like, the ones up there by the Littleton Village, those where the arm doesn't go all the way across, I mean, that's, those.
Poor design.
No, kids. That preceded our time, that preceded our time. No, 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 we all, all those, all those signals are pre-designed. And part of what we're doing is, we're moving to, one of the things that the city didn't do here for a long time was standardization. So we're moving to standard, the poles, standardization is important. And then, you know, the mast arms is where you change some things, but standardization this way helps our, us to maintain, helps those things, so that's what we're doing. Our biggest to, to part of this is, is this is, this actually existed before COVID. The lead time on signal poles two years ago was 14 months. So it's, it's just crazy, and COVID's not helped. And then we also have this going on in the fleet side of the house. The manufacturer calls, we're, I'll just use police Tahos, for example, manufacturers two weeks ago called and said, if you want any vehicles in '23, you need to put that order in. We're going to open the window on Tuesday at 8:00 a.m. and you must put that order in by Thursday at 6:00 p.m., and that's it.
Wow.
So the supply chain is, you know, just, you all know it, it's just crazy right now. So, but this one is, we know what we're doing, we, we've designed these, we've moved to standard, and so this is a chance for us to get ahead of, we know price increases are coming.
So it's really the mast, that's, so this is just the pole, not the mast?
Yeah, some of it's the mast, but primarily the poles.
If we get economic development to entice some street pole manufacturers to come a little thing.
Well, I have to tell you, though, so we, we put an order out about two years ago, we put an order out, we were really excited, we had like seven poles coming in after this months and months of lead time, and the truck showed up at our yard, and he had like 30 poles on there, and our seven were on the bottom, on a huge flatbed. So they decided to go and deliver the rest of those and then come back, because that, you know, it happens.
Question, Tiffany, I'm not understanding this. This H U T F funds, it sounds like we have extra money, we're going to spend that extra money.
Right.
But this discount, is that like borrowing from your next paycheck? It's not budgeted for?
No, this is a discount from the vendor. So if we order them today, we get a 5% discount. If we wait, they're going to charge us an additional 5%.
But we already have that money budgeted, so it's.
When, when do we pay for it, Tiffany?
23. 23 is when we'll pay for it, because we probably won't get it.
We're just ordering it now.
Right.
I'm just trying to make sure that we're staying.
It's like a pre-order, pre-order discount.
To get a better deal. To go above the budget.
Yeah.
No, this is, this is, we, we were planning on doing this in 2023.
We're just ordering early.
Yeah, how much have we gotten?
Do we have to give them any money yet?
Half million?
Yeah.
It's a half million dollars.
It's about, it's about 500,000 dollars.
We were planning on half million next year.
That's, we got multiple conversations going on here, let's try to focus.
Do we have to give money, money now?
We do not. We have to order it, we don't pay for it until we receive.
Which it will be 2023.
But it, it could, just based on lead times.
Okay.
But I want to go ahead and appropriate it now, in the event that we do have to pay for it by the end of the year, if it comes in.
So if we have to pay for it by the end of the year, does that over and above our budget? That's my question.
It will be this year, but we will reduce our budget next year, because we had planned on doing that in 2023.
So it's almost like borrowing from a paycheck?
It's pigeonholes.
Borrowing from 2023, I guess.
Yeah, remember, we have a five-year capital plan, so if, you know, we, we don't budget, well, we budget specifically in one year, but we plan over five. So what we're saying is that we see the expenditure in 2023. So in order to capitalize on a discount, we got to order it now, and if it, we have to pay for it at the end of the year, for example, it'll just simply come out of the budget for 2023.
So that we'll lower the budget.
We'll lower the budget.
Thank you.
So in the end, the five years still balanced.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're not appropriating over and above what we.
Okay, thank you.
It'd be great if they got here early, but I'm not banking. Tiffany, Tiffany makes me bank on it, because I can't go out and spend it unless she's like, you know.
They will be here, they will not.
Yeah, they will not.
So there's a, there's a couple more that I just wanted to make you aware of, is related to streets, too. So we got extra building use tax in 2021, so above what we had budgeted. And so, again, to get ahead of inflation and costs that we see are coming to us, we want to go ahead and spend that additional 300,000 that we got in. And, and we will explain this in the budget amendment. I just want to give you an idea that this, this is what we're working.
It came in higher than expected.
It did, building use tax.
What was the cause of that?
Well, I don't know the specifics, but I think I was very conservative when I started seeing the revenues during COVID, and building was at a halt. But I think we have.
Oh, this is just based on your estimate, not state estimate?
Right, no, this is my estimate.
And what is this going to be used for, do you think?
So that'll go to streets. So again, street maintenance, infrastructure, so he will be able to adjust his plan that he has.
On purpose.
On purpose.
It's a lot of it, to be honest with you, some of this is, is a hedge against inflation. I mean, we're just, anything that's tied to petroleum in any way, asphalt, any of those things, is going up. So it's, some of that's a hedge against inflation this year.
And then one more related to public works is.
I've said two before, what, this is like three or four now.
So the last one is Denver Water, and Keith might be able to explain a little better, but Denver Water is going to be replacing some water mains throughout the entire city. And so when they do that, they have to, you know, cut into the streets, put in the water mains, and then resurface it. So we wanted to take advantage of doing some of that now. The, the good part is, we had planned on this again in 2023 and going forward, we want to advance it to 2022, but Denver Water is going to reimburse us for the majority of that. And so we're taking advantage of Denver Water's generosity and all that right now.
That's an example of our ability to plan ahead versus the past, so we know where Denver Water's going, and we partner with them. This is, so basically, we're, they're, they would only be taking half the street down, because the main's only going up one side. So what we're doing is partnering with them to basically get a street for half price. And so we, we just need to pay for that work under our contract, and then they'll reimburse it.
And that's the same thing that we talked about before, you're going to take it from 2023 and lower the budget.
Right, and then Denver Water is going to help reimburse us for that. And I believe there is an I G A coming for you in the next week or two, related to that project.
How much are they paying, is, how much is our?
They are going to be paying 475,000.
Out of what, I mean, what percentage is ours?
So the total is 750, so two-thirds, roughly.
Two-thirds, so it's a good bargain for us.
Yeah.
It's actually, it's in the northwest sector, I can't remember.
Anywhere but Aberdeenville is right.
Well, we have to get people to use more water out there. Get a good water main.
Breaking mains over there. I guess so.
But this is one of those ones where the combination of future planning with our utility partners makes a huge difference. You know, we do things now where we talk about shadow conduit in the ground, where we put conduit in, and it may be empty, but so you can pull fiber in the future, for example, as I partner with, partner with utilities. So this is us getting ahead, and, and, you know, last thing we want to do is pave a street, tear it up. I used to think in New York, New York State Electric and Gas, they sent interns out to drive around and find new asphalt. Oh, there's a leak here, we got to do an emergency. That's what I was convinced of in New York.
You know, counsel, I, I would, we really need to credit Keith and his staff for working through this reimbursement with Denver Water. You know, we, every city struggles with a separate utility company when they cut your road, and trying to get them to put back the asphalt in a reasonable fashion is difficult. So credit to Keith for trying to figure out a way to, you know, where we control a lot of that, so anyways, it's a great strategy. Is this where we're supposed to stand up and applaud him?
Definitely.
Just don't do it for Tiffany.
Any other questions for Keith and Tiffany?
Keith, I think your asset management's been perfect. You're right on getting this done.
We're making progress.
You are.
Just got to get to the tree, chipping, chipping trees, chipping, chipping.
Get to those words.
You were trying to tip it. So I thank you.
Thanks, Tiffany.